This is the regular meeting of the Arts and Culture Commission. Today is Thursday, February 20th, 2025. Seeing a quorum, this meeting is officially called to order. Madam Recording Secretary, please take roll call.
Commissioner Russell?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez Guerra? Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Ochoa? Thank you, we have quorum.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, you may be seated. And before we get to public comments, I would like to invite our new Commissioner, Miguel Ochoa, to introduce himself.
Can you make sure your microphone is on, please? Thank you.
One more time? Okay, that's better. Yeah? Oh, okay. First time, little nervous. So yeah, first generation, Mexican-American, Santa Ana native, Ward 6. Just looking to provide value to the city at the capacity that I can. So, thanks again for the opportunity.
On behalf of the rest of the Commission, we welcome you to join the Commission. And I'm sure that the other Commissioners will have words to say to you at the end of the meeting during Commissioner comments.
Thank you.
All right, and so, at this time, members of the public may address the Arts and Culture Commission regarding any non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the committee. No action may be taken on non-agenda items unless authorized by law. Does the public have any comments they wish to share with the Commission? Please know that you have three minutes to speak.
We have one public comment. Sara Guerrero?
Testing. Okay, yeah, it's working. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Sara Guerrero, I'm a resident here in lovely Santana. I'm a longtime Santanera, faculty member at Cal State Fullerton, where I teach theater, directing, and acting. And I'm the founding artistic director of Breath of Fire Latina Theater Ensemble. I'll be back here on the 20th because we'll talk about the grant that we got. So thank you for supporting the arts. I also just wanted to let you know that our Breath of Fire fundraiser is this Saturday at Alta Baja. And it's really definitely highlighting love and nurturing that we need right now, specifically Amor y Amistad, which is our season and our focus for this year. We're with the funding that we got from the city and our wonderful donors in our community. We're launching our season, and I'll talk more about it the next one. Again, I emailed everybody. I don't think I emailed you, Miguel, because I don't have your email. But you were all invited to our fundraiser. My point being here today was to say, come to the fundraiser. But we are sold out, which is beautiful. But if you want to make a donation, we're more than happy to take your money. But what I want to say is, I sit on the Orange County Arts Council Board, and I've been on the board for over 12 years. And as a Latina-representing organization, with not only Latina in our title, a lot of D E I language and learning about the changes with the NEA and the Kennedy Center. I want to just say that I appreciate my community and what it represents and the voices that it lifts, that I hope that we find our way with this new administration. And I want to just put myself, I just want to say that I'm here in support of still lifting the arts and how healing it can be, how transformative it can be, how wonderful it is to hear stories so that we can see ourselves in others, right? Like the Teatro Campesinos vibrant being, the teachings of the Mayan mythology about In la quech, you are my other self. And so, the practice of finding ways we connect. And I use story a lot. I use a story as a director to connect with not only my students but my professional actors. So I just want to say that I see you all and I appreciate you volunteering your time and being here and trying to lift our arts community and how that connects to our, all the other, there's so many complex layers to the city, but that I'm also a source, a resource as well. And I want to continue to lift the arts in whatever time and space I can give and also through Breath of Fire Latina Theater Ensemble, that we're here to support our community in whatever capacity we can. And I appreciate that we have an arts commission, that we still have funding for our programming. So I just want to say thank you. But you'll learn more about our programming on the 20th. But, oh, one really quick thing. So with being a member, being a resident artist of Grand Central Arts Center with Cal State Fullerton, faculty member at Cal State Fullerton, I've started this pilot program with us really utilizing the theater space here in downtown Santa Ana and Grand Central and really looking at programming and making theater that is accessible to not only the students but also are here in our community. So we do have a new play that we helped develop called Sometimes I Wish, about 10-year-olds waiting for Santa on Christmas Eve, and they're unhoused. And this was a new play that we developed with a grant that we got with the Reimagined Theater for Young Audiences. And it was nice that I could partner with the university. And they saw the benefit to the program. Anyhow, that will open March 14th to the 22nd. It'll run Fridays and Saturdays. And I'll make sure to email it to you all. But that, we would really love to see, especially, I'd love to see your faces at any of our events or if there's constituents that you'd like to send to our events. I'd love to see that. Just know that the door is open to everyone who wants to participate. And you don't always have to write. Sometimes just listening really helps open you up. Anyway, that is, I'll probably be on 30. This timer was never put on, by the way. But thank you so much. I will leave these, who can I leave these with? Okay, I will leave... Six, seven. I'll leave these if you're interested making a donation or if you wanted to see if you can go on the waiting list. Thank you. I'll be saying I've had coffee before I go rehearse. I'm actually on my way to rehearsal with my students right now. I had to get caffeinated before the 7:00 to 10:00 rehearsal party.
Are there any other comments for today?
We also have Gail Levose?
Oh, I haven't got my calendar yet. Good evening. My name is Gail Levose. I don't know if you know me or my family, but I come from the Levose family. We were the owners and operators of the Yost Theater for over 50 years in downtown Santa Ana. We're the one actually that brought the arts to Santa Ana. Not only the movie theaters taught in Spanish, but we also brought local artists, singers, from Vicente Fernandez to Cantinflas to all these different actresses into the city of Santa Ana. So I have very passion about the arts and I'm very concerned about the arts. But I can go off on a tangent on that. My two issues that I'm going to discuss today is that last meeting, it was my first time attending because I was really going to attend to, see if there was anything I could do to clear up the graffiti in my neighborhood that have tackled our beautiful murals. And I didn't know if there was anybody here that could guide us on how to get that cleaned up. That was my intent last time I attended, but I didn't get a chance to speak. And it was the first time I ever heard about, so, Sowayo? So, I don't know, being a sister city, I had no idea that was going on. And I was a little bit taken back by the fact that we're going to give them close to $50,000 for a mural in downtown Santa Ana. My two concerns with that are, and I'll keep it brief, is there was a commissioner that questioned the height of that mural. I want to go on record that I want to make sure that the artists that are coming from Mexico for that art, for that mural, are medically cleared to be able to write that scaffolding and able to do a mural that high. I don't want my tax dollars to be responsible should anybody get hurt. Safety is very important. And that was kind of dismissed last time. And I was a little bit shocked and taken back that it was just put to the side, didn't really bother anybody. It bothers me, bothers me. So please, please, make sure that safety issues are intact when these artists are coming into our city. And I don't know how tall that building is, at least seven, eight feet. Make sure they're able to do that. They could have vertigo, they could have existing conditions. I don't want to put the city in jeopardy. Second of all, I want to make sure that we're able to see what they're going to draw. I mean, I want to see a schematic of what's going on that wall. I mean, I think we should be told if you should be transparent on what we're going to put up there. I am concerned it's close by the Yost. You know, Yost is my baby. So I want to see, the public should see what you're going to put up there before we approve it or before you approve it. I don't want people from Sowayo not incorporating Santa Ana into the mural. We have a story to tell. And that's a story that's going to be there for a while. And I want to make sure that's incorporated and not just wherever Sowayo was from, their arts. I want to make sure that we, the locals, have a say so in that mural. And that's it, thank you. Where did I get a calendar? I can have it? Oh, thank you.
And are there any other comments at this time?
None.
Then I would like to actually invite Mayor Manuel Galvez Sanchez and also Mayor Valery Mesquadas speak.
Manuel, my friend, ¿cómo estás? You're on mute.
Oh, yes, sorry. Fine, Valery, how are you today?
Good, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm sure my three minutes are running. I wanted to welcome the wonderful mayor from Sowayo, Dr. Manuel Galvez. I want to thank all of you on the Commission for the meeting tonight. There's been a lot of work that you all have done and that we have done as a city, working behind the scenes for the murals. And we're all very excited and looking forward to the mural. There will be, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, there will be artists from Santa Ana and artists from Sowayo working on this together. And Sowayo is our sister city. And so we are looking forward to it. And so I'm excited to hear tonight about what we're doing. And again, thank you to the Commission for all the work that you are doing within the community around the arts. We all know how healthy it is and beneficial it is for our children and our community. And we have some amazing artists in our community, as does Sowayo. So, Dr. Galvez, thank you very much, my friend, for being with us tonight.
Thank you, Valery. Saludos a todos desde Michoacán. Hoy me encuentro en la ciudad de Morelia, la capital de nuestro estado, en una agenda de trabajo. Pero estoy muy contento de estar en esta reunión en la que, bueno, pues hoy está tocando el tema precisamente de esta colaboración que tendremos entre las ciudades hermanas de Saguayo y nuestra querida ciudad de Santana, en donde muchos saguayenses radican desde hace muchísimos años y que de manera paralela hemos ido construyendo pues los santaneros saguayenses que decimos ahora, hombres, mujeres, niños, jóvenes, que se sienten muy orgullosos de sus raíces como saguayenses y muy orgullosos de estar en la ciudad de Santana. Creo que es un proyecto muy importante. No se hubiera hecho y no sería posible si no existiera la gran voluntad que tiene la Mayor Valery y todos los Consul members de la ciudad con quienes hemos encontrado excelentes aliados y amigos para poder colaborar, no solo en temas de arte sino también en temas de cultura, de educación, de salud, y muchos otros que en la agenda tenemos para trabajar y que ambas ciudades obtengan beneficios y sobre todo nuestros habitantes, que como alcaldes es nuestra prioridad, que sigan mejorando su calidad de vida. Y nos dará un gusto enorme visitarlos ahora próximamente en el mes de marzo con nuestra primera Expo artesanal, cultural, y de negocios que tendremos con ustedes en donde más de 35 artesanos, comerciantes y empresarios estarán yendo a la ciudad de Santana para mostrar los productos y poder crear alianzas económicas y productivas entre ambas ciudades y seguir dando a conocer nuestra cultura y seguir conociendo también la cultura de nuestra ciudad hermana de Santana. Así que gracias por el espacio y espero que pronto nos visiten también en nuestras ciudades aguayo.
And we have a translator present.
Yes, thank you. Usually we stopped in between, but I'm going to try to convey what you said. He thanked the city of Santa Ana for this collaboration. I'm very excited for this collaboration and thanks the Mayor Valery for this opportunity. And he mentioned as well the people in Santa Ana who are descendants of other people from Saguayo and are very proud of their heritage. He thinks this collaboration between the two sister cities is going to improve the quality of life of individuals in both cities. He will be presenting here in March at Expo with Arts. And this is going to be focusing on businesses. There's going to be 35 presenters between artists, people, entrepreneurs, and settlers. And they're going to be showing their products and it's going to be very useful for each, people from each other's, from each other's city to get to know each other's culture. And again, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Dr. Manuel, I think we left out the part, and I know you spoke with, and by the way, you do speak a little English, so thank you. I just want to let everybody know. We left out the important part. It's just not the work of the mayor, but the work of the mayor and the city council as well as the city manager and city staff working together along with the Commission. So I just want to clarify that. Did I miss something? Manuel, no?
No, de verdad gracias a todos, Valery, to the city manager, to the Consul members, to all the Department of Arts for coming out of the way on this project that we've been working on since then, for years, and that it was impossible to consolidate. And that, well, today, the planets aligned and we're collaborating, both cities, to leave a legacy in the city of Santana and that we hope that we will do the same in our city of Saguayo.
Thank you, thank you, gracias, that's all I have. Thank you, thank you so much. I want to thank the Commission as well.
I'm going to say what he just said. Yeah, he wanted to thank also the city managers, the Commissions from this Commission of Arts and Culture. And he, well, they've been talking about this for several years and finally the plan is aligned and now the project's going to come to fruition. And he is very grateful to the city of Santa Ana for that.
Thank you to everyone for their comments. And at this time, we'll move on to the consent calendar. So this is the time for the Commission to consider matters under Consent Calendar Items 1 and 2. Do I have a motion to consider items 1 and 2?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Lopez Guerra, for the motion and Vice Chair Hernandez for the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Matter approved by unanimous consent? And now we'll move on to the Work-Study Session. We have two items under the Work-Study Session. Please note that there will be no motion or action taken on these items. The first item under Work-Study Session is Sowayo Sister City Mural Selection of Muralists.
Okay, thank you Chair Wu. So, as we had already discussed from the last meeting, that we have this collaboration with Sowayo, our sister city. Next slide, please. I want to do a quick overview just to get everybody on the same page. Request for qualifications, our RFQ was released on November 4th, 2024, inviting professional artists and artist teams who live or work in Santa Ana to submit. That was very important to us. The budget total is $45,500 for the selected artists and/or artist teams, and that's inclusive of all fees, insurance, everything. The location is the wall on the south-facing exterior of Garage B on Fifth and Spurgeon overlooking calle Cuatro Plaza at 300 East Fifth Street. And you can see the little diagram there. A mural installation is anticipated for spring 2025. There were, 15 proposals were evaluated and considered for the Arts and Culture by the Arts and Culture Commissioners and Sowayo delegates, who is present today and will be participating in the discussion. And to the right, you will see the list of all the applicants and their ranking and scores, their respective ranking and scores. So as we had discussed, we will select up to two artists. And as we know, the Sowayo team has selected two of their own. So we possibly would do two of ours. So the first applicant is Brian Peterson, Art Inc. Brian Peterson is the founder of both Faces of Santa Ana and Faces of Mankind that have sprouted in cities across the US such as Anaheim, California, Riverside, California, Detroit, Michigan, Miami, Florida, and Jackson, Tennessee. In the past six years, he has completed over 30 large-scale murals. Most are in Orange County, California. His work can be seen in homeless shelters across the US as well as gracing the walls of high-end shopping facilities like Ovation Hollywood, which was formerly known as Hollywood &amp; Vine in Los Angeles. Comments, some to some comments from review panelists. Great techniques with vivid colors and realism combined with structured elements. And he does an excellent job playing with perspective using shadows. The next slide will show some samples of his work around Santa Ana. The first one is Scholarship Prep School in Santa Ana. And the other one is Rafferty Santa Ana. So as you can see, he has a lot of experience working with very large-scale and high-rise murals. And the next slide will also show examples of his experience working with, again, very high, large murals. Excuse me. And the second applicant is Up to Speed Murals. Damien Luhon is the founder of Up to Speed Murals, creating murals for private residences, coffee shops, homeless shelters, music venues, and more. In the past six years, he has completed nearly 40 large-scale murals, most of them in Orange County, California, as well. He has broadened his artistic repertoire to include sign painting and hand lettering. Some of the comments for his application was "great technique and use of realism and color at the same time, an impressive large-scale experience handling hyper-realism in an authentic way, combining color technique and objects." And he has diverse styles in lettering portraits and landscapes. The next slide will show examples of his work and as you can see, the lettering as well as large-scale work. And the next slide will also show very high, large-scale murals. And the next slide, please. Murals and scale and length and diversity of different, not only techniques but also different styles. And finally, we have this, Andrea from Sowayo will present on the two artists that they have selected. The first one being Alejandro Navarrete Gonzalez and the second one is Miguel Angel Sanchez Amesqua. Alejandro. The other one, that's that one.
Just to be clear, no relation to this Amesqua?
Yes. Andrea, anytime you want to start.
Andrea, si vas a presentar en español, si puedes ir pausando de poco a poco para que la traductora pueda traducir y los Comisioners puedan entender lo que estás hablando, por favor. Gracias. Tal vez tengas el micrófono apagado?
Hi, everyone. I'm going to try to explain in English, but I'm going to tell you something in Spanish too. Well, one of our muralists that we want that they can participate was Alejandro Navarrete Gonzalez. He is from Guadalajara and he was doing a lot of works here in Mexico and Guadalajara and Mexico City and around all the city and the country. And he was participating in Sowayo too. He had several works and was really good with all the techniques. He had a team of muralists that did a lot of works that have in a huge format. So he has a really good experience in work about the highest works. Because I heard something about that they can be safe and they can be tried to work very safely. So they have that experience. So Alejandro have did many works about in the highest places. So for that thing, we consider that was a good option. So there is a little bit about his history. And he has participated with a lot of murals in the Guadalajara city and here in Sowayo. They have a lot of murals of that was here. And you can skip next, please. Okay, this is one of the works from Alejandro. They combine a lot of techniques and he used something that calls stencil, that is something like black and white technique. And that's really beautiful because they can combine with all the colors that stay there. And they can put something that mix some things that are from the Mexican culture principle, like the butterfly that is here from Itugán and the ajolote that you can see there. So I really like how they can mix that kind of objects in the works. Next, please. Well, this is the details that I was talking about. Next one. And this is one of the techniques that I really like a lot, that you can see the stencil is the face for the people, the youngest men that is in that side and how they can combine that color. And principle I like very much because he can represent in the culture from Mexico. Next one, please. This is the detail. All of these works are with material that is spray, like graffiti. Next one. This is one of the beautiful works that they did in the city of Guadalajara. And they are working in the, about the bridge because they, all the works are about try to make colorful spaces that at the same time was really secure for all the people. Next one. Next, please. Okay, this is one of the murals. You can see the material that they can use, that is a spray, that was in the other one. But they are doing all with a spray. This is one of the murals. This is so animate, but I like to. I think that they can combine the techniques and for that reason, I like very much. Next one, please. This is the detail about how he worked. And this is other work that they can did inside of a house. The other one, please. Well, this is like how can they represent? And this is other, very similar. And next one, please. This is like the details, how they can involve and how is different. And I like very much how they can put a different styles. So I think that is very valuable because they can combine with other artists. Next one. Well, this is a work that they did in, very high, in the wall. And this is another technique that I like very much, how they can put the black part and then all the colors inside. Next one, please. Well, this is everything for Alejandro. Well, this is everything for Alejandro. And the other, sorry. Okay, this is from Miguel. Miguel is from Saguayo, Chocan. He born here in Saguayo. And here doing a lot of works here in Saguayo. Some of them, they have worked in Guadalajara and in California. And a little places of California. I think that in restaurants and little stores. Next one, please. Next, please. Well, the work from Alejandro is, the work from Miguel, sorry, is really great because they was doing a lot of works about the mascara from Tlalualil. That is one of the representing things that we have here in our culture, like tawaliles. So he can represent very well that masks. And the same time, they, he has collaborating in doing this mask. And in the, when it's the festivities, they, he can do it very well. So he was doing a works that was really tiny, but he has a lot of experience. Well, I can say that the work for Miguel is so good because he can do it a lot of things. But he's working with other kind of technique. I think that he use more like paint, not a spray. But I like it very much because the technique for Miguel is more realistic than the other ones. So he knows everything about Saguayo, about the history, and he can represent it very well. So I think that they, he can do a really good job. But at the same time, I think that he can learn a lot about it for the very good artist that you have from Santana. Because I think that they can mix that techniques and we can be part of the proposal that was a really good job. So for that reason, I would choose that muralist here from Mexico. And I hope that they can do a really good job. It's everything. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Andrea, for the introduction of your artists, the Saguayo delegation to the commission and to the city.
Oh, sorry, Chair Vu, there's still one more slide left for, from my presentation, for the tentative timeline. The next slide. So the final slide is the tentative timeline. From February to March is, once we ratify and approve, you know, the artists for today, staff will then start with the onboarding process, which includes vendor paperwork, agreements, and insurance. And then we'll move on to, in April, for the design collaboration between the Santa Ana artists and Saguayo artists, where they would meet over Zoom. And then finally, hopefully, if all goes well, they would start executing the mural in May. And that's it for now. So finally, have any questions or comments?
Before I open it up entirely for Commissioner comments, I just want to provide a little bit of context as well. So I know last time we spoke about maintaining a balance between the artists from Saguayo and with the artists from Santa Ana. And so I want to propose that it would be a good idea for us to choose two artists from the list. And I also want to share that, from the way that we discussed it last time, we came to an agreement that we were prioritizing styles that would mesh well with other art that we saw when we looked up Saguayo. So the, while, while we used a point system in order to ensure that there was standardization across the commissioners and panelists who were evaluating these artists' portfolios, I really want to emphasize that the numeric value of the number does not accurately reflect the artistic value or skill that these artists have. Because the way that we approached it was for this particular, specific project that is a collaboration between artists of two different locations, as opposed to the inherent value of an artist overall. So to the artists who applied, please take the numbers with a grain of salt. I really encourage you, if you do want additional comments and feedbacks for your portfolios, how you can do better for a future project like this, to reach out to get those comments. Because the qualitative feedback will be more fruitful for you than seeing just the number that's in this report. And with that, I'll open it up for any comments, questions from the rest of the commission.
Just a little pause. Should we translate this? Is this necessary, Mayor? Do we need to translate? Mayor?
I understand.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. The RFP, or the Request for Qualifications, indicated that the artist was Santa Ana-based?
Well, Santa either lived or worked in Santa Ana.
And one of the artists that we are considering does not live even in the state of California, nor is the working address included in the application in Santa Ana. And so while that artist is very talented and has, you know, accomplished in many ways, I just feel like we are missing the mark here if our intent is to invest in our own community of artists and to uplift the work of an artist who is based in our city.
Yes, I understand. But the way, I think for several of the applicants as well, that does apply to several of the applicants. And it's about, do they contribute work to Santa Ana? You know, there's many applicants that don't live here at all. In fact, I think not everybody, yeah. So I think with that criteria, we want to be inclusive of those who have been here, who've lived here, but for whatever financial reasons, whatever reasons they had to move out, but have obviously a lot of work here in Santa Ana.
I'm curious again if this is a value that anyone else on the commission feels is really important as we make a decision about who we invest as someone from the audience or the community has mentioned is a significant investment. And is that person going to be someone who is rooted in this community? Not to say I'm a huge fan of the artist I'm speaking of, but I do think that is a really important point that we need to discuss because I don't know that it was, maybe people didn't consider it as they were looking at the applications.
Yeah, I, first of all, I want to thank the mayor of Saguayo and the folks that are from the Saguayo team that, you know, have been doing their due diligence to, you know, to provide, you know, somebody that's going to best represent the city of Saguayo in this partnership between our city and yours. If I could just ask a question for, because I got the first, I got the gentleman, your artists, the ones that you chose. One of them I heard lives in Guadalajara, but did he originate from Saguayo or he just, he is from Guadalajara? And then I had the same question for the second artist. That'll help to elaborate the point I want to make.
Andrea?
Hermano, este quería ver si me puedes explicar o aclarar, si Andrea o el alcalde, si las personas que se eligieron viven en Saguayo o si nacieron en Saguayo.
El primero, Alejandro, él no vive en Saguayo, pero conmigo desde mi, empecé como alcalde en el 2021, hemos hecho cuatro murales en Saguayo con él. Entonces tenemos la garantía uno, que es muy profesional, que tiene un gran talento y tenemos la muestra, ¿no?, en nuestros cuatro murales que ha hecho y que ha podido expresar realmente a través de su arte lo que nosotros queremos, este, que se represente dentro de estos murales. Y Miguel sí es totalmente saguayense, este, Tlalualil cien por ciento, hijo del patrón Santiago. Este, se ha desempeñado por muchos años trabajando en Saguayo, más de veinte años en el tema de la pintura, este, en diferentes escuelas, murales, artículos. Pero también trabaja en Estados Unidos, tiene familia acá. Entonces es alguien que le gusta viajar, pero nació y radica en Saguayo, Miguel.
Excelente. Muchas gracias por esos comentarios.
So I guess everybody heard the question. And the answer is Alejandro is not from Saguayo. But they have, or he has worked at the city of Saguayo with the mayor and has done four murals. And because of that, they know about his professionalism. And they have this sample of the four murals that they enjoyed a lot working with him doing. And he can express through his murals the jest that Mr. Mayor want to express about the art of the murals in the Saguayo style. On the contrary, Miguel is from Saguayo. He's bred, you know, born and bred there. And he has also worked in other cities. He likes to travel. He's been in the US, has worked in Guadalajara. But he is from Saguayo.
Thank you. Yeah, so, you know, to acknowledge, you know, the concerns that Commissioner Russell had brought up. And it's similarly to what my intention had been when I first initially, when this was brought up and we spoke of it, that I was hoping that we would have somebody that was from Saguayo to be elected. And that was the hope that I went into it, going into the voting. Now, once, you know, going through the reviewing process, then I tried to strike a balance between, yeah, the skills that, and also the application. And, you know, just the approach and the visioning that they provided in the actual application of it, that then dictated how well. And then also, like, just the applicability. I think that the Chair Vu mentioned, that like, how well will they be able to match their style with the style from the folks from Saguayo? And so I felt good about my choices. But I also felt that, you know, that the consensus was going to build up. And I know that the new commissioner was not part of these votes. But yeah, more or less, we were somewhat in agreement about what the top ones were. I'm in favor of potentially, you know, doing, you know, the top two. I think both of them bring in a lot of skills. But as far as the question around whether folks live or don't, like, you know, one of the artists doesn't live in Saguayo, but has contributed many times, as has Brian Peterson, and as was shown in various. So, you know, yeah, he doesn't live here. He might not even be here now. But he has worked here and has works here. So, you know, so then he cannot be disqualified. And then, I think it's, both of the top two artists and all the folks that provided were, you know, just really good work. But, and so I'm really thinking that we're going to have a very good mesh of skill sets and a vision, you know, to come together. So I'm really looking forward to that process and seeing what will come about. The last comment I was going to make is that, all right, this escaped me. I'll leave it there for now. But yeah, so again, I think, you know, in this, we want to empower artists locally, and I feel that we do in a lot of ways. But, you know, but also like, oh, here's what I was saying. You know, there's a dichotomy in Mexico City about nativism versus like outsiders coming in and doing things. And they call this phenomenon like the chilango, you know. So anybody that wasn't born in Mexico City is called, and comes to Mexico City and does, you know, and lives there, is called a chilango derogatorily, mind you. And so it just makes me feel like, like I'm not originally from Santana. I was born in Mexico. And so that wanting, folks don't have to live here. And a lot for many years, I cared deeply about this city and advocated and showed up to meetings and gave public comments. And I didn't live in this city, but now I do, and I'm proud of it. And so I just want to say that we don't have to live here in order to contribute to the beauty that is the culture, you know, arts and otherwise here in Santana. I don't like it when folks say, like, when people come to public comments and say like, and speak up against or for our issues here on the council. And then people are like, well, this guy doesn't even live here. Like, you don't have a, like, it doesn't matter, like. And I'm not saying that, you know, this is, that's an equivalence, but I'm just saying, like, we should protect and serve the people that live here or were born here in Santana, but at the same, while at the same time wanting to welcome people to the culture that is Santana, regardless of what people live here or not.
Additional comments, questions?
I just want, and I know we're going to get into the, I thought I was. Can you hear me now? Okay. I just, I want to make sure, and I can go ahead and translate for myself if you're taking notes for translation. I want to make sure that we uphold to whatever agreements we came as we welcomed everyone. And I honor the way in which we're presenting and acknowledging the value of everyone who took their time to lovingly apply to be part of this memorable opportunity for us as we celebrate the joint cultures and the richness. I want to make sure, and you've heard me say this very much about systems, if we said we were going to have two people, two people, one person, one person, I just want us to maintain this process throughout so that it's clear, unequivocally transparent, so that as we move forward, we're focusing on the beauty of the art. And my hope and prayer is that moving forward, we'll have more opportunities to engage in this type of collaboration and welcome even more artists to have the different representations, variations, and identifications of how they choose to present themselves and the culture in which they see.
Vale. Buenas noches, Manuel. ¿Cómo estás? Bienvenido. Para mí lo que quiero asegurar es que no solamente quiero elevar lo que mi compañera dijo de reconocer el talento, el tiempo y la dedicación de que los artistas presentaron al someter sus aplicaciones. Pero en completa transparencia quiero asegurarnos que las conversaciones y los acuerdos que hicimos al principio de decir tener uno o dos artistas y todos los parámetros que establecimos al principio se mantengan para asegurar que estamos caminando bajo lo que acordamos al principio, ¿verdad? Y también espero que conforme crece nuestra relación, tenemos más oportunidades como esta para celebrar e incluir a diferentes perspectivas culturales a nuestras ciudades.
I just want to add one further comment, which is, I don't want my comment, original comment, to be perceived as some kind of protectionism around people who are from Santa Ana or claim this as the birthplace. I see this more as a very large investment we're making in the arts in our city. And I would like to see such a large investment go into the capacity building of our local artists, not just a beautification project on a wall. And so my concern is more that with such a large city investment that we consider that that might then help to build up that an artist who is going to continue to work in our city and do other amazing, great things. And when we connect with an artist who works outside of the city, we bring really interesting perspectives and new ideas. And that's a very important part of having a vibrant art community. But in this particular instance, knowing that this is about the roots of people who call this city home, but also have find roots in their heritage in another city, I just think it should be a priority that we make, that we think about someone who will continue to be a presence around us. I'm not to say that Brian Peterson may not come back and do more murals because I'm sure he will. But I would really like to see this be an artist who calls this place a place where this person would like to continue to work and connect and mentor with other artists as well, being such a large-scale project.
Thank you, commissioners, for your comments. I really appreciate this.
Thank you commissioners for your comments. I really appreciate this thoughtful approach to ensure that the decisions that we make are really gonna reflect our communities the best that can and have like lasting impacts that are positive for our community. In the vein of like fostering belonging and inclusion to the city that expands beyond of a rigid definition of who gets to be a Santanaero. Um, I really appreciate the way that we're approaching this, uh, discussion to be able to open up the opportunities for artists. And, uh, one potential idea I have to touch on like that professional development piece is, for myself, there were other artists that I would have loved to give a higher score if they had had more experience or a more built up portfolio. And would it be possible at all to invite some of these applicants to participate in the execution of the mural? So they have that, um, experience under their belt?
Oh. Oh, I'm left alone. I thought it was gonna be with.
Makes it easier with that way. Again, we're not gonna get too much involved into the, uh, into the process of part of the agenda.
City manager, uh, city of Santana, so obviously, we, there's, there's, there's a distinction, right? There's one, the process you've been following in selection, and then there's the added aspect, so we can make, make this one of a fruitful type of, of accomplishment, right? Here today, we're just making a determination how to proceed with the actual grant approval, correct? And so to the extent that then we can mitigate for future involvement, why not? Right? If the artist we, you know, you as the committee, uh, as the commission select wants to accept visitors so they can see their work, why not? We all know that artists have very ways, different ways of approaching their art, how they prepare. Sometimes people are very open to having folks from the outside come. And sometimes they're very selective and exclusive in their process, so we wanna be respectful. But to the extent that we make this a communal, open tap event, why not? I'll say it in Spanish here, I have to too. Uh, Álvaro Núñez, soy el gerente general aquí de la ciudad de Santana. La gerente aquí, la, que, di, preguntó que si había una oportunidad de gente que aplicó que se involucre en la preparación del, del mural. Aquí hay dos distinciones que tenemos que hacer como la comisión que está haciendo. Una es la selección para quién va a aprobarse lo del mural. ¿Verdad? Lo, lo siguiente, la recomendación, ¿por qué no? Si, si la persona, el, el artista está dispuesto a, o dispuesta a tener y presentar y enseñar cómo se prepara su mural y es abierto a eso, ¿por qué no? Pero también sabemos que artistas son muy participar en cómo se preparan y su enfoque y, y cómo hacen su, su arte. Y no muchos son disponibles a tener ese tipo de disponibilidad, ¿no? Hay unos que se preparan de una manera, tienen su preparación secreta, quizás íntima, muy personal. Pero si es de aprobar y proseguir, porque esto es una cosa buena lo que estamos haciendo, ¿no? Tenemos uno, un, un contrato de un arte binacional con la ciudad de Hermana. Es, es un proceso donde esto es positivo y donde podemos mejorar y tener mejores relaciones. Y además dejar términos para mejorar, ¿por qué no? Está bien?
Yeah, so I think, but also ultimately, so to every, oh, anymore. Thank you. Thank you, Álvaro. But also I think if we're gonna have and add this extra, uh, component, then there has to be another process. You know, in order to who, who are we going to select of the, so this is something we can discuss if this is, if everybody is in agreement that this would be something you'd like to add to this mural process, to the sister city mural process, uh, up to you, if you want. But we would have to come up with a process for it.
I, I could, um. I don't know if this has, if what we're trying to do with, with Commissioner Russell's trying to do needs to happen with this particular project, you know, like, I, I agree 100% that we need to empower our, our local artists, you know, I mean. City manager here, you know, city manager, please help us fund, you know, uh, our, our event sponsorship so we can, you know, $200,000, so we can give up to, you know, $10,000 donations to local organizations to do things like murals, like events, like such. Like, that's the kind of money that, that we can, like, then spread out to as many people, and, and we did that when we had that money. I understand now from conversations with Tramp that that was, there was a lot of, you know, COVID money and ARPA money and things that were being moved around for us to get even to that place. You know, listen, I'm not greedy. If you, if you can at least give us 100K, that means that's forty different projects potentially, you know, that we were able to fund with this kind of work, so. You know, I know that's a separate issue, but it's tied into like what it is that we're trying to do here. I'm not sure that it's fair for the artists that, that won the grants for them to then, now, after the fact, be told that who they gotta work with or not and be in a collaborative space, like. Folks like, you know, there was one person that applied one individually and also applied with a team, like. I wasn't sure why that happened, but, um, that they, you know, folks, if they wanted to work together, could also approach it in that process and, in that way. And to like, be like, hey, like, one of us might not have a lot of skills, but I got this other guy has a lot more skills, or they have a lot more experience than I do, you know, and that's the kind of organic kind of collaboration that perhaps could happen within the muralist scene in here in Santana, and that I'd be interested in helping to fund and promote, but. So in, in any case, I, I'm not sure that, it's already gonna be a little bit complicated trying to get, you know, the Zaguayo artists, you know, with, you know, these potential two artists together to, you know, to work it out. Also wondering about like, uh, translation, you know, kind of situation, if these folks will be able to talk to each other, if we're paying for that or, or what, you know, I understand that, I don't know, Brian doesn't speak in Spanish, so. But I know that Andrea seeks very well, and, and there might be other folks that are part of the project that can help with that. Yeah. And, yeah, so anyways, that, that's, those are my thoughts on that. Love to hear from my colleagues.
I think they said they're okay with translation. They're okay, yeah.
Alright, um, I, I made this comment last time and I'm gonna reiterate it. I want us to be able to in the same way that we're moving forward, whichever way, in full transparency, I really, and I stand, I, I'm very firm on a few things. I stand very firmly on wanting to see the renditions, the collaborative renditions as they come about. Because I think at the end of the day, it's this commission who's going to have to stand in front of the community and say, this is why we feel because that's what we've been entrusted to do, represents the combination of our two cities. So to me, that is imperative, that we just don't unveil something and have no notion of what was put there.
Is there a feedback process of any kind built into this, um, other than them sharing sketches with us? Uh, I mean, I don't actually know if there is a way for us to comment, prod, uh.
I think we could try to, right now, other than bringing back what they've discussed back here to present to the entire commission, other than that, no.
Let me add, Chair, uh. I have full confidence in the Zaguayo team to be able to adequately shape the proposal into something that will, like, best represent their city in the best way possible, um, here, and, and, you know, so. I'm, I, I think we should encourage public input, perhaps, you know, there, there's an email inbox that, that folks can be guided to, to, to send. You know, what they would like to see in the city. Obviously, it's our wall and it's our city, so, you know, like. But given the art that was, uh, that was shown from the artists that were chosen from the Zaguayo team, coupled with, you know, the top two on, on, on our, our side, I, I see some amazing stuff happening there, you know, like, I, I can already envision some beautiful stuff. I also wanna say like, the art, the mural that, that is in Mexico is, is actually kind of, has a different feel than the art, art and murals that are here. So that's something to, to consider as well, that I feel that even with, you know, this Hawaii team will be able to, to help lead that conversation. Uh, and, you know, um, and then, and then collectively have something that makes both of the teams feel well. I'm sure that this Hawaii team would not, you know, something, you know, was proposed by the art, the artists chosen here that they were, you know, that they would go along with it if they didn't feel that that best represented their culture and their city.
Thank you to all the commissioners for this really robust conversation, and what I'm hearing is that it's a reification of the goal of the Arts and Culture Commission in to uplift local artists and grow and build out the, the rich community around art here locally. And this includes that, you know, in the future, we have, we hope to receive even more muralists with even more built up portfolios, more qualifications from all different backgrounds, um, to really fully represent the city in this and other, many other projects beyond. So at this point, do we have to actually like vote to accept?
No, it's not a business, uh, business item, but, so it's more of a consensus that this is, you know, going to be the two artists. And then we as staff will move forward with the, the rest of the process.
So we don't have to make a motion towards it?
No, there's no voting during, uh, work-study sessions.
Um, I will share that I would be comfortable moving forward with the top two artists from the list that we have already evaluated. And if there's any, um, differing opinions, I encourage you to speak up before we move on to the next agenda item. Hearing none, um, we'll move on to the second item. So the second item under work-study session is discussion on the proposed location and design for Rainbow Crosswalk in downtown Santa Ana.
So, um. Sorry. Mayor Manuel Andrea, thank you. Um, we're gonna move on to another item, so you're welcome to stay as long as you'd like, or you're welcome to leave if you have other things to do for your evening. But thank you so much for your presentation. Oh, did you have any comments? I'm so sorry, Andrea, we didn't give you a chance to make any comments. Oh, no, you're muted.
Sorry. No, everything is fine. Thank you very much for the time and for making possible that project. We are really grateful and really excited for all the things. So we send, uh, my best regards. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good night, everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hasta pronto.
Okay, sorry Chair Vu to interrupt you, so now if you like, we can continue with the rainbow crossing. Okay, so with the rainbow crossing we discussed last time, um, this, and you had asked for some renderings, so I'd like to show them to you. First. Okay, I'm just gonna go over the history again so that we're all on the same page, but you've heard this already from the last meeting. And thank you to you two, we don't really require any more translation at this point. But you're welcome to say, up to you. Okay. I think it's already prepaid, so. Uh, Rainbow Crosswalks in Santa Ana, um, a constituent contacted the city regarding a request to install Rainbow Crosswalks in downtown Santa Ana to commemorate Santa Ana's LGBTQIA+ community. This item was added to the July 20th, 2021 city council meeting agenda at the request of the mayor. Council suggested that Arts and Culture Commission provide guidance on location and material for painting crosswalks. The following locations were mentioned by council, Fourth and Spurgeon, Fourth and Main, Third and Broadway. Council also suggested using the Progress Pride flag created in 2018 by Daniel, by artist Daniel Quasar. So, um, Arts and Culture Commission recommended the following locations that maximize its visibility to the public as well as have a connection to the LGBTQIA+ community, Fourth and Spurgeon and Fourth and Main. Um, however, as we were doing, as we were talking to Public Works who would be executing this particular project, uh, it was brought to our attention that Fourth Street presents issues with the California Public Utilities Commission, or the C, CPUC, as they regulate the OC Streetcar track. Any modification to the approved plans for the streetcar will require the CPUC's review and approval, including crosswalk strip, striping. It is highly recommended that an alternate locate, alternative location be considered. So Fourth is the problematic area, Fourth Street. Um, can you go to the next slide, please? So as you can see, this is the mock-up that you had requested. This is, uh, Fourth and Spurgeon. But the rail bisects the flag right there, because we cannot paint on the rail for safety reasons. And on the next slide, please, Fourth and Main. Um, you see again, the rail bisects the flag, so that's how it would have to appear. And so, yeah, so that's where, that's where we are with that. We can, um, I can still forward at least the, pass on the design to the Public Works folks and let them, uh, or they had suggested, and let them, you know, use that, those designs. Um, but they had suggested that there's Broadway and Second. Yeah, Broadway and Second, Main and Third, Spurgeon and Third, and Spurgeon and Fourth, but that's where we, that has the same problem. So those other three are the, basically Third Street is where they're recommending that this, um, that the flags be painted for the crosswalks. Um, but if you, but what we can pass on to them today is if we can agree on, if you can get put forth your recommendation as to what design you would like to see. So can you go back to, um, keep going back, 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 to the beginning, to the beginning, please? Yes, and then go to page four, yeah. So would you like the, uh, pro, um, progressive flag um, that has the double triangle? Or where they incorporate the progressive flag into the stripes themselves? Or the progressive flag with just one triangle, which you see on the top? Double triangle? And can you move it one more slide, please? So when you see the double triangle on the one to the right, you see where it connects? It connects to the, um, the sidewalk, too. So there's all those designs, if maybe we can discuss that today. And I'll, I'll bring this back to Public Works.
Well, folks are digesting. I will share that the one that I am most partial to is the design with one triangle, the one on the top left. It, if we're going to be basing this off of a designed flag that was purposely designed by someone within the community, I would caution against like making any major changes to it that may not have the intended message. And the two triangles just looks just a little bit strange, like.
But just so you know, Long Beach does double triangles. Long Beach does double triangles, but that does, yeah. But I understand your comment.
Um, for me, the one with the single triangle still looks like an elongated flag at least across that crosswalk.
I'm in agreement, and I really appreciate the, the Santa Ana in the middle with the colors, so I like, I'm gonna be a teacher and be A, B, C, D.
Well, the numbers are there, one, two, three, four, on the bottom right-hand corner.
Oh, my goodness. I like one with the addition of force center.
Can you show?
Can you show us the streets again? And can you clarify whether the Fourth Street issue means that we're still gonna proceed with force with using Fourth Street despite the fact that it's kind of breaks up the?
No, I I think their recommendation is not to use Fourth Street. Because they don't wanna go back to the CPUC and have them approve this, yes.
And was there one more slide? Was there three slides?
Yes, there's some slides at the very end. Um, keep going, please. Yes, there, there's Broadway and Second. It only has one crosswalk. Next one, uh, Main and Third. And next one's Spurgeon and Third. That's it, those three. And that only has two crosswalks.
I I need help visualizing. So the one on first, no, Main and Third, Main and the next one, go back. There, that one. Can you give me some landmarks so that my brain can picture?
What's Main? Yeah, it's the old City Hall. But the old City Hall building.
That's your landmark.
I understand. I'm just struggling because of the meaningfulness of Fourth Street in our city and and, um, and really trying to make a point to why this is so important for us as, or for me, and I don't wanna speak for my, my fellow commissioners, but making, making a point to why making inclusivity part of of who we are as a community. So Fourth Street is to me very important. And that is who we are. The the track is something that's helping and it's not just all Santa Ana. I'm I'm kind of, and I'm I'm having a hard time articulating that, but I'm really struggling with that. I'm genuinely struggling with something as materialistic as, and I know we've invested a lot of money. It's very intentional. But for the fabric of who we are as a city, I don't know. I would like to hear what my fellow commissioners think of that.
One, um, argument in favor of Main and Third, I I I know we're still looking at design, but just, I'm sort of fixated on where it's gonna go. Is that, um, a lot, when we have parades or things like that, or I think the, um, the five K, I think, maybe the five K doesn't go quite as far up as five Main and Third, but Fiesta de Patrías, when it's now it's returned to downtown, people would be, would good, would see it, people, because a lot of the events are kind of right there. So I think I I really like that as a location because it it's a place that people, people know because it's, I mean, the two of you both knew immediately, um, that, uh, the businesses in that vicinity. Um, so it is a visual place. It's a place people recognize and people frequent.
I'm sorry, which cross street did you say?
Main and Third.
Oh, Main and Third, okay. So I mean, what we can, I think Public Works, if they really had to, Commissioner Lopez Guerra, will try to make Fourth Street work, but let's have two other options for them. So we'll say, please, can you do Fourth Street? And let's set it. So Fourth and Spurgeon, is that okay? Or I think Fourth and Main is gonna be even harder, but if you want, we could do the Fourth Streets and then, um, and is there any, so do you wanna make Fourth and Main? Let's rank them is what I'm trying to say. You wanna make Fourth and Main number one, Fourth and Spurgeon number one, and then let's look at the other um, ones on Third Street and and give them a list.
I will also just add, I'm not a fan of the breaking up of the colors.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm worried also about maintenance because what if they need to do some kind of maintenance that might interfere with the artwork? Um, it being a new rail line, I don't think we know what's, you know, what kind of things could be happening, and I would hate for us to make such a large investment again in some artwork that um, might suffer some damage.
Yeah, I I'm curious, uh, what, um, the city manager knows which, uh, which area, uh, which, if 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 there's a lot of, uh, donuts in the area of Third and Main, uh, maybe, maybe not. Um, yeah, cuz like, I mean, that's legitimately what like what I would see like happening on Third and Main is like, there's probably more uh, wear and tear, and so need to like fix it on on there with them.
Yes.
So, yeah, I'm I'm kind of leaning off because of that on Fourth and Spurgeon.
So you want Fourth and Spurgeon, is that number, um, let's, I'm gonna start writing tally. So Fourth and Spurgeon, we get one vote for number one.
Yeah.
Any other, and then your, what's your next one?
Number two is, yeah, I mean, Fourth and Main.
Fourth and Main is number two.
Three is Third and Main.
And then number three is Third and Main, okay? Any other feedback?
Oh, and I wanna echo what what Commissioner.
Lopez Guerra.
The Commissioner, uh, that around like combining the 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 letter Santana with the number with number, slide number one.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think that'd be awesome.
Okay.
Like, if possible.
With Santa Ana in the middle.
Included and to and and also one triangle. Yeah.
Okay.
Not two.
One triangle, okay. Any other feedback on ranking for streets? So we have Fourth and Spurgeon, Fourth and Main, Broadway and Second, and Third and Spurgeon, or Third and Main.
May I? I agree with Main Third. The reason being, it's, I kinda want the general area to kind of trickle out and not be so focused on Fourth anymore. If we can bring landmarks like that to subsequently kind of trickle over to the neighboring streets, it brings more viewers and spectators to come and visit other parts and also other businesses. We 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 gotta subsequently, Fourth is Fourth and we know it, and it's calle cuatro for everybody. But if we can start tailoring, maybe not, maybe not this time around, but I'm just proposing it. So it trickles to other areas. Sometimes I feel like as the further out you get away from Fourth, the the businesses, they kind of start getting like the tail end of the of of things, and that's not fair. So for me, if we bring it over just one street over, it's not really that that big of a a dynamic still on Historic Main. It's one street over and it actually brings people to kind of, you know, take pictures and stuff and then be like, hey, well, Mission Bar is here, like, let's just grab a drink or let's go to the vault and play some pool. But it it like, whether they understand it or not, it's happening. And I just want it to be not so concentrated on Fourth anymore, and let's, let's, let's broaden it out. Vertically and horizontally, like, let's try to bring it out.
So between or among Third and Main and Third and Spurgeon, how would you rank that?
One more time?
Third and Main or Third and Spurgeon?
Main.
Main number one.
Historic.
Okay.
Main is historic. Another thing, I agree with the Santa Ana in the middle with the one triangle. The only thing, the excess of colors that you proposed, not that I'm down, but but I feel like it's, 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 it could be a little like clustered. And I want Santa Ana to really be vibrant. So sometimes when you muddle it up together, you can't distinguish where it starts and where it ends because it's so, it looks like it's pretty, if you can pull up the slide, it's right next to each other, so it kind of it could be confusing if it was like an aerial shot and someone used a drone. I want it to be really highlighted. And the flag be like the, you know, the, yeah, exactly.
So I'm I'm agreeing with our our new Commissioner and and his artistic lens to it. And I'm, so I'm agreeing on a couple of things. I'm not loving away from Fourth, not because I don't agree with you. I actually love, love that, bringing forth the the conversation about expanding the heart, right, of downtown, and and I'm with you about going, going every which way on the compass, right? Um, so Main for me is a non-negotiable. I'm going on record for that one just because I think it's important. That's one vote only, doesn't matter, right? And I really do like the, for, from an aesthetic point, just having Santa Ana stick out or Santana, right, however, however we place it, I'm sure we're gonna get, again, micromanaging. I'm sure we're gonna get renditions of what the font is gonna look like and and so forth and so on. But for me, that is, Main is definitely it. And then on my wish list, because never ask me what I want, I would love at one point, City Manager, to have a four-way, um, light so that people can actually walk, you know, those X ones. I just think it would be, it it would be a nice touch. Wherever we decide to have this, so that people can have those cross. I think it'd be beautiful.
Okay. All right, um, any other input as to ranking of these, uh, locations? Once again, Fourth and Spurgeon, Broadway, uh, Third and Spurgeon, Third and Main, Fourth and Main?
I'm really hesitant to, I I really like the idea of this crosswalk being on Fourth, but with the, um, streetcar running through it, I'm just not sure how that will work out in the long term. And I'd hate for this to be an example of like a project that doesn't go well so that we can't try this again in the future. So, um, my one vote will be for Third and Main.
Okay.
Um, because while I really like the locations of Broadway Second, Third and Spurgeon with what's nearby, um, I think it's really important to make sure that this has all four crosswalks and neither of the other two have four crosswalks.
Hmm, okay.
And I also echo, um, so far what seems like consensus on design.
Okay, so it's a Santa Ana with no rainbow colors underneath, right? Okay.
I thought it was, um, potentially rainbow, but whatever makes sure that the Santa Ana pops out the most. Which is what I understood, but I could be wrong.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm I'm open for it as long as it doesn't look, cuz the rendition that's up there, it looks a little muddled where it's like, you know, it could get lost in the sauce, if that's the term I'm finding. So, yeah.
Okay, so is it fair for, is it accurate for me to say, um, that uh, your first choice actually is actually Third and Main, this is what I'm hearing? The second choice would be Fourth and Main? Or is it? Yeah, Third and Main, Fourth and Main, okay. Okay.
Yeah, cuz we might not, we might not get what we want, right?
Yeah, um, yeah, we just wanna give them.
Asking for Santa Claus for some, you know, like, yeah.
At least they know where you're thinking, so I think they can try to work around, work with that. Okay, great. And then we're gonna have the Santa Ana that pops in the middle, one triangle, um, and wish list is four-way crosswalk.
Not a wish list, but something that I wanna bring forth from last time is some type of plaque that has a QR code with a description of why this is important to our community and what it stands for. And have it in multiple languages, if we can start with a couple of languages and as it becomes apparent, and again, a reflection of inclusivity, we add additional languages, languages and descriptions of why this is here. It's not just a symbolic, but it's it's a really authentic reflection of our community.
Okay. Any other comments or questions regarding the Rainbow Crossing? Yes. Oh, okay, I thought I saw some thinking hats. All right, that's it for me.
All right, moving on into the next section. Does staff have any comments they wish to share with the commission?
Uh, not at the moment.
Does the commission have any comments they wish to share? Commission members, please note that no member may speak more than once until all have had an opportunity to speak. Also, the commission may limit our commit, comments to three minutes each.
Well, I would like to, first of all, uh, welcome our new Commissioner. It's not in, it's not here, but what, what's your, your name again?
Miguel Choa.
Miguel Choa, and not to interrogate you here, but I I and not say that I was like, you know, like researching you, but I did like, are you a art, a tattoo artist?
I am.
Yeah. Yeah, so I I I looked at your page on Instagram and I just saw like how talented you are, and I'm very much thinking I'm gonna need some work done on one of these arms here, you know, uh, so that's, that's, um, yeah, we're gonna talk, yeah. No, but, um, I'm really, uh, happy that you're joining our our team here. Um, you know, as you could see, we have lively conversations, you know, and, you know, with respect, you know, even as we like disagree or or differ on, you know, slightly on 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 items. Overall, in general, I think we've been so productive on this commission, each and every one of us, um, and even folks that were here before, like Chair McNair, um, to be able to to provide cohesiveness and and to be as fair um, and as attentive to the needs of our communities, uh, as we possibly can. So, yeah, I, I'm sure, you know, you're gonna, we're gonna be, uh, you're gonna be talking like no one, like, you know, like the next meeting here, you know, and have all sorts of comments about every single items. Yeah, I look forward to, you know, to your input. Uh, you know, I know the first time you're like, uh, should I speak? Should I not speak? No, no, tu habla, you know? You know, yeah, we're here to to listen to each other and and to learn from each other, most of all. Um, yeah, and and, um, yeah, it's it's tough whenever you're are, um, I mean, even your resume, right, like, when you apply for a job and and you don't get it and you start to question your value, uh, you know, your your self-worth, um, you know, imposter syndrome is real, you know, especially with artists, like, uh, there is a need to be validated by, you know, the projects that you're approved for, um, and so, you know, and it's hard to to get, um, projects under your belt, to get like the wind on your sails to really make this your livelihood. There's so much that we can and should do, you know, to promote local artists and and artistry in general, you know, that, you know, permeates throughout Orange County. I know that other cities look at what we do, um, and and, you know, wish that they had what we do. Of course, we also look at other cities and what they do, Costa Mesa. And and, you know, and they have robust budgets, you know, for the arts, and and we just don't here because, you know, we're limited and, you know, and as we're facing future shortfalls, you know, with, you know, Me- Measure X, uh, winding down and a lot of the the COVID one-time money, you know, that, you know, cities were flush with uh, coming to an end, we're we're coming, and and as we're seeing on the national level, we're seeing how we're having to make difficult cuts, you know, across the board on on, while trying to maintain the services to our city, you know, like, I, as I was walking here and and running to to the, to the, to the council chambers, I, I I had a flashback of just, you know, like when I first started coming to these meetings, like, uh, what is it, like thirteen years ago? Being so nervous, uh, not, but but so excited to be a part of the democracy and and, um, engaging and, you know, and and trying to make a difference in my city. So, you know, it's an honor to serve uh, and and, uh, and and everybody that does, you know, here and has, you know, alongside me, uh, because made me feel proud to be a Santanero, you know, to like reinforce what that is. And so, you know, like, we should continue to promote the arts, we should, um, we should advocate for our city council in our city staff to, you know, realize how much of a benefit it is. Of course, financially, but also like, you know, uh, you know, emotionally, mentally, spiritually, you know, that helps to to make Santana like a beacon of of cultura of across Orange County. So like, let's continue to work towards that, and, um, I'm looking forward to the Sahuayo mural and many more murals to come. Uh, and so like, you know, let's, yeah, let's, let's make this twenty twenty-five a year, el arte here in Santa Ana. Thank you.
I'm gonna echo a lot of the things you just said, welcoming it. Alongside these colleagues because we do have a very productive and, um, honest conversation.
Positive intent. One of the things that I would love to to elevate or challenge, um, every other intersection of arts within our very beautiful city is possibility of knowing what the future holds in regards to us, that we identify where those intersectionalities lie and how we can leverage each other's budgets, whether that be with the district, with the community college, with health support, and so that we can really bring forth this creative industry, which is what we know, one of the largest growing, and we know what the value and resources that we have in the city, so. Um, but let's measure what we value, and so in terms of that, let's figure out how we can collaborate. I'm looking forward to those conversations as I'm calling everyone else to it. I'm looking forward to those conversations and I'm calling everyone else to it.
Um, I'm also very excited to have you join us. Um, I am looking forward to more conversations, um, and hearing, you know, the artist perspective, um, that you've already brought to the table today. Um, and so that's such a delight. And, um, and to know that you have, uh, you know, a studio of your own, and so you're kind of working in that capacity is also, um, such an attribute. Uh, I wanted to, um, reiterate, uh, what our guest who spoke earlier, um, about the Breath of Fire Latina Theater Ensemble, having, um, a fundraiser this weekend, and I know it being sold out, um, doesn't mean there's necessarily space, but I hope that you, um, will continue to show up and, and support these local organizations when they call for us, um, to just be present and to be a witness to the kind of work that they're doing. Uh, because I think it helps inform and it helps us make better decisions as a commission when we're in the community and, and we're there. Um, on that note, um, I know Boca de Oro is back in downtown Santa Ana on March first, so next Saturday. Um, I, I noticed there hasn't been as much, um, information about, uh, you know, where to be and at what times, but I'm sure that will be forthcoming. But, um, I hope to see some of you there in the community on that day. Um, you know, it's sort of a nomadic, uh, experience where you travel to different locations, um, and, um, and lastly, on the note of, um, budget cuts and, um, our role on this, uh, you know, we, we've been entrusted by the artists of our community and the people who enjoy the arts and our youth who, um, don't necessarily know about the arts yet, uh, necessarily, and, um, get great exposure through the opportunities that we help enable or create. Um, and I think that means we have responsibility to advocate by, via our council members, um, who look to us to know where, where we should be making investments. And so I, um, I look forward to hearing how you all are doing that and whether we're going to be writing letters or, um, going to the council. Um, you know, our leadership here on the commission, I know you might, uh, wanna take a lead role in that. Um, but I, I do look forward to seeing how we can advocate for as robust an arts budget as possible. Um, and we can't do that by being silent or being absent. We have to be present and squeaky. Um, and so I look to that guidance, um, for how you all want to lead to do that or how you need, um, contributions toward that effort.
Welcome Commissioner Choa to our commission. Um, we are beyond excited to have you. Um, to be quite honest, when we were operating as a commission of four members, it was a little bit tenuous if we're going to be able to meet most months. So I'm very, very happy to have you here so that you can contribute to our discussion, provide additional insight, perspective, and really help us be able to achieve what we dream of achieving in Arts and Culture in Santa Ana here. Um, can't wait for more lively discussions with you. Um, I want to sort of echo the comments I brought, I, I had last time around making sure that we as a commission continue to uplift art in a way that brings our communities together, all of our respective communities, and each one of us belonging to several different communities. Right? I really wanna make sure that we bring those communities together through this art, through the art that we do, the work that we do here and beyond. Um, locally, globally, everywhere, we are in a type of great division and we can't let ourselves fall to this division. Um, the more we can work together strategically, coordinated, in order to achieve our goals, the better that will be for all of us in the long term. And so I'm looking forward to future conversations about how we can build those strategic goals for this particular commission and develop the plans that we can be able to expand our work as much as we can. And with that, this meeting is officially adjourned. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty PM. Good night, everyone.